I call meeting of County Council for January 25th, 2016 to order. We always have an indication and like to say appreciate seeing them, good crowd here tonight. But we always have an indication tonight by Mr. Councilman Pitts. Then we'll have a pledge allegiance by flag and we'll all thank you.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to assemble together to conduct the business of Lawrence County. What I pray that you will be with us, give us guidance and wisdom as we deliberate and discuss the business of Lawrence County. Where I just thank you for the employees of the county and the services that they provide for the citizens who live in our county. Thank you for our military for defending the freedom that allows us to assemble here and to conduct your county business. For all these things I ask for your name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united all, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. All right. First thing tonight is approval of our agenda for January 26th, 2016. As everyone sees, we've got an amended agenda tonight. We'll have a motion for approval of our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, unwillfully approved amended agenda.
Now, second.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion or change? If none, we vote by show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to zero. Next thing is approval of minutes for the January 12th, 2016 meeting. I think Betty Ann Furnish went to us tonight. Do we have a motion for approval of our minutes?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? If none, we vote by show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to zero. First thing we got tonight is a public hearing ordinance number 805. Mr. Crookshank?
Mr. Chairman, this calls the transfer of certain, the assignment of certain fee agreements of Imetec over to Continental. Mr. Martin is here. Would you like to hear from him? He's with the company, he represents the company.
You want to explain, Tom? Before we have the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council. Mr. Chairman, members of Lawrence County Council, the matter of 49 is just exactly as Mr. Crookshanks has explained. Lawrence County has graciously entered into fee and lieu tax agreements with Imetec, which is located on 385, right at 40, right at Greenwood County line, on three separate cages. And the company is still in business, still going to be in business. Their parent company is Continental All Motor Systems Inc. And they are restructuring the way that they are aligned with Imetec. Imetec is actually now going to become directly a subsidiary of the parent company as opposed to a standalone company. And so they want to keep all three of the fee and lieu tax agreements in place, which is obviously a very good thing. And so they have asked councils consent to send the transfer and assign all three agreements. One is from 1997, one from 1999, and the most recent was 2014. All of those representing millions of dollars of investment. They're asking to transfer and assign those funds, Imetec, to their parent company, Continental All Motor Systems Inc., which is a US corporation. Ms. Anderson, you'd ask about another parent company, is German, the one that owns Continental Tire and all of those. But Continental All Motor Systems Inc. is a US corporation. And so that's what this does. The ordinance authorizes three separate agreements of which Lawrence County and the company sign and say, keep the same deal, no changes in the terms of the deal at all, just transfer it over to Continental. I'd be delighted to answer any questions with any member of council may have.
Anybody have any questions? Not, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For anyone that does not know, fee and lieu tax agreement is what you have to, it's the economic development tool to bring businesses in the county. If you don't furnish that economic development tool, that business will go to another county. They won't come to Lawrence County. And that's why you have to have a fee and lieu tax agreement. So public hearing ordinance number 805 is now open. Anybody who wants to speak for again, come forward. If no one speaks, we're closed public hearing and I'll add a motion for third reading ordinance, 805.
Second.
Got motion in second. There will be any further discussion. Not, we vote by show of our right hand, all in favor. Seven to zero. Next thing on our agenda tonight is preserving Lake Greenwood. I'd like to invite Mr. Phil Lunder to come forward. He's director of planning of Greenwood County. We welcome you here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I believe it was a year and a half ago when I stood before you and identified the idea of perhaps of going in together to do a Lake Greenwood master plan with Lawrence, Greenwood and Newbury County. I'm pleased to report to you tonight that that plan has been developed and is provided to you for your review and comments. It's been a great process that we've undertaken. All of you have been a part of that in some form. And we certainly wanted to provide you just a brief overview of the 20,000-foot level of what is contained within the plan. And I'd be glad to answer any questions at the end. Couple slides here that I should share with you.
Everybody has its book in front of them.
This is okay, I'll stand right here. This is the overview of the Lake Greenwood master plan. We entitled the process Plan Lake Greenwood. And as you see here, it's a draft copy of that. Greenwood County has adopted the plan. However, if there are any changes that Lawrence County or Newbury County has, Greenwood County will certainly entertain those modifications. This plan was developed for us by the Ryan Planning Group, the Mutheny Burns Group, and the Arnett Moulthrow Group. They all worked together on this process. Our study area is the area shaped here in the dotted line, a black dotted line around Lake Greenwood. We utilize the main roadways, main highways within Lawrence, Greenwood and Newbury Counties to highlight areas that we've worked through using partial data or anything like that so that we could clearly identify where the study area was. But as you can see, it goes through Waterloo, Cross Hill, runs down to Newbury County in the Highway 34, and then loops back around into Greenwood on Highway 702 and 246, and then back up to our shores. The initial questions that the consultants looked at were, what characteristics make Lake Greenwood a special place? What's so special and unique about Lake Greenwood? What makes it stand out for individuals that both live in the Lake Greenwood area as well as visit? And what are the long-term challenges and opportunities facing Lake Greenwood? What things can work against the vitality of the lake? What are the assets that must be preserved for the future of Lake Greenwood and its users? And lastly, what are the key goals that should direct this project? And just like consultants that come in from out of town, they did not have any ideas or preconceived notions of what Lake Greenwood was. So what they did was identify a number of different individuals, groups, agencies involved with Lake Greenwood. And as you can see here, this is just a small sampling of the agencies that were contacted during this process to get their input into the master plan. And we appreciate all of the information that we received from these agencies. Also, a number of individuals are in the audience tonight that served on various committees and attended the meetings of the Lake Greenwood master plan. Our consultants identified using the tax data from the three counties, identified the land usage of the county, of the area between the three counties. And as you can see, most of the area is green, which is forested areas, agricultural areas, areas that have not been developed. And that's a positive thing because if it was fully developed, there wouldn't be really a need for a long-range plan. We certainly don't see, as you can look for yourself in the plan, we don't see all this area developing as commercial or residential or any of those types of things. But we do see a large amount of this property being utilized into the future for agricultural and forested areas. We had a number of community meetings and held various forums to gain public input, whether it be asking individuals what they liked through a survey, what they didn't like, things that they felt were priorities, as well as asking them what kinds of things that they would like to see. And here's an example of, we gave, during one of the sessions, we gave individuals copies of large maps of the lake and identified things that they liked to see. If they wanted to see a boat ramp in a certain area, or if they wanted to see a park, or if they wanted to see more residential neighborhoods in a certain part of the lake. One thing we did hear time and time again was beach access for public, utilizing certain areas for beach access, additional places to put in books for individuals that don't live directly on the lake. The master plan is basically in four pieces. The introduction, the second part are goals, objectives and strategies. And the third part is a vision map, which kind of depicts all of these into one map. And then lastly is that implementation schedule that they provided to us. Tonight I'll go over the goals and objectives and strategies very briefly, and I'll show you the vision map. The focus areas that we'll talk about tonight are six. First being the environment, community facilities, land use and design, the economy, transportation and intergovernmental coordination. These were the six primary areas that kept coming up to our consultants time and time again from the public. And looking at the goals and objectives, the goals, objectives and strategies. For the environment, the main thing that they identified here were, make Lake Greenwood cleaner, looking at ways to make the lake a nicer place with, whether it be litter or sedimentation or other types of things within that area. And protect sensitive areas from development, looking at areas that have some issues environmentally and discouraging development from those areas that would exacerbate those situations. And lastly, reduce sedimentation within the lake. That is something that our consultants heard time and time again, especially in areas in codes where they've experienced a large amount of sedimentation. So that was another primary area that they looked at. For community facilities and services, the intent here was to make Lake Greenwood safer and more accessible. One of the things that came out from the plan for a safety issue were lights on the bridge piers. As we promote more activities in the evenings and as we have more fishermen on the lake for cracking tournaments and other type events, there is a real need for bridge lighting on those piers to provide some safety aspects for the boaters out there. And also expand opportunities for recreation trails and open space, again talking about beach access, promotion of additional areas for individuals to enjoy the lake that don't necessarily own the property on the lake. And third, increase awareness of public events, recreation and fishing opportunities, getting back to promoting activities for individuals to utilize the lake more often. For land usage and design, this was an area that they looked at from a different angle, looking at creating a cohesive identity for the lake, looking at ways to make the two sides of the lake more harmonious. And planning for new growth, looking through coordinated efforts to bring in new growth. If Greenwood County is recruiting businesses to the lake, it certainly wouldn't be a thing where, it would only be on the Greenwood side. We certainly want to see commercial growth and residential growth for that matter on all sides of the lake because we all benefit from that. And create coordinated wayfinding signage for the lake area. This was an idea that was brought forward as a way to identify the whole lake area as a cohesive unit and looking at ways to kind of promote that. And fourth, establish guidelines for commercial development, looking at ways to promote commercial development and encourage the recruitment of certain businesses to the area. Getting kind of touching on that as well, the third item here, develop additional commercial services on and off the lake. That ties in directly with the previous one, establish guidelines for commercial development. We've heard, if we didn't hear someone say, I want to have a public beach access, we heard there should be a restaurant on Lake Greenwood where we go and eat our dinner, whether we drive up on our boat and eat dinner there, or if we drive our car and utilize that mode of transportation to get there. We've heard time and time again, people really want a restaurant on the lake. But we also want to grow the economy in ways that support lake living, recreation and tourism, create a focal point for economic development by defining South Carolina Highway 72 as the main street of the lake, or Lake Greenwood Boulevard, or some kind of catchphrase so we can identify that Highway 72 really is that primary spine that runs through the center of the lake. For transportation, looking at creating a coordinated multi-modal transportation network, looking at ways to get from one place to the other, not only by car, but by bicycle, by walking, by paddling, kayaking, any kind of way to get from one place to the other on the lake without necessarily using your car. Maintain and prevent existing roadways. That's something that the entire state is wrestling with now. But that came from within this planning process too, is looking at ways to improve the roadways that are within our area. And lastly, create a network of bikeways and off-road, multi-use and pedestrian networks that allow individuals to walk maybe from one neighborhood to another, or one area of the lake to another. As you know, a lot of the areas on the lake are separated because you have such long roads that get down to a certain point, and there's no connection between the next point over, unless you get back on the main highway. So looking at ways to connect those neighborhoods a little bit easier than by car. And lastly, and maybe the most important, is intergovernmental coordination. And this was an idea to support and promote coordinated use and development of the lake and the lake area, looking at ways that we can partner together to work towards a common goal and create a shared management structure to address the needs and impacts of the lake area. As you know, Lake Greenwood is owned and maintained and managed by Greenwood County, but it also has Lawrence County and Newbury County residents that live on it. And so certainly there needs to be a more coordinated structure on ways to address the needs and impact of the purpose within the lake area. And first of those areas to look at would be adopting the master plan by the three counties. The third, oh, the second, I'm sorry, is create an inter-jurisdictional board, commission or committee focused on issues related to the lake and advisory to the relevant governing bodies. And that group would be an appointed board that really wouldn't have any specific team, but they would make recommendations to Greenwood County Council, Lawrence County Council, Newbury County Council, with different things. And it's a way to share ideas and thoughts between the three counties. And lastly, develop partnerships between local governments and public agencies. And I'm happy to report that that is already occurring. A number of the agencies that we have been working with, especially in Lawrence County, have been great partners in this project. They've always been helpful to us and to our staff to work on this project, provide information and guidance. So that is already occurring, and I hope that continues on over the, as the future will. Lastly, is the vision map. And this is a little bit hard to see because there's just so much stuff going on on the map that our consultants tried to show as much information visibly as they could. Through the center of the Lake Greenwood area is kind of this pink block, and that's what they were considering as potential on and off-lake commercial, and identifying Highway 72 as the main spine and core of the rest of the lake. You will see small red circles, and those are commercial areas, whether they be public boat ramps that have like a convenience store, a place where you can get gas, snacks, small meals, those kinds of things. Those are the type of areas we want to encourage more commercial development. The yellow and gold areas are areas we would like to encourage more residential usage. A lot of those areas are already being utilized as residential, so it only makes sense to encourage more residential in those areas. And as you see, a large part of that is kind of an all green, kind of a pale green color. And all of that is shown as agricultural reuse, forested areas, areas that have no development impact as within the next 20 years. And then the little line that kind of zigzags throughout the area, kind of a reddish to pink tone, that is a multi-use trail that is just kind of a general idea as to where that trail will go to encourage pedestrian movements, bicyclists to go from one community to another there on the lake. Be glad to answer any other questions that you have. We are excited in Greenwood about this process. It's been a really good opportunity for us to get together with individuals in Greenwood County, but also with our partners in Lawrence and Newbury County. So we've been really excited about this and look forward to working with you in the future on this plan. Thank you.
The main thing is the quality of the water in Lake Greenwood.
Yes, sir.
Just a water source for drinking, and we hope a water source for Lawrence County in the future.
Yes, sir.
We've talked to Greenwood County about that, and we certainly want the water to be as clean as it can be and be kept as clean as it can be. But does anyone on council have any questions, Mr. Lunder?
I've got a comment, Mr. Chairman. It's always good to have a plan, but there are, I'm sure there are financial implications for this planning process and the implementation of such a plan. I'm not sure what requests are being made of each of the three respective councils in terms of financial obligations and/or implications in the approval of such a plan. Just a comment. Another comment, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just going to ask, did Greenwood adopt it in the next one?
They adopted it in November.
Yes, sir.
Had Newbury adopted it?
No, sir. We're hopeful that they'll look at it within the next two months.
Basically by adopting it, it's just to get together, work with Greenwood County and Lawrence County, work together, form a commission, making people, and they would discuss what needs to be done. And does anyone else on council have any comment?
I just wanted to ask how much encroachment fees are going to increase, and which counties pays the encroachment fee?
Yes, sir. We have not had any discussions on encroachment or any kind of fees for that matter in relation to the lake. That's all handled for our lake management office. And that is an item that comes up each year during our budget process. I'm sure y'all are getting your budget process as well. But Greenwood County works on theirs and has adopted it in June. So they'll be looking at those kinds of things. Right now, I don't have any idea as to them, whether they would want to increase that or not. So I'm sort of on information here and that.
I guess what I was really asking you, which county does people that own the Lake Greenwood pays the encroachment fee? Is all of them, or people in Greenwood County that don't pay?
Just for the dock fee? You're speaking of the dock fee?
Well, they call it encroachment fee on the tax.
Yeah. I'm not really sure if there's that on property on the lake, but from what I understand is that Lawrence and Newbury County individuals that own a dock pay a fee each year for that dock. But Greenwood County, that is included within their taxes for property on those properties. There's not a separate fee that's identified on the tax of that.
No, I understand people in Lawrence County pays the encroachment fee regardless of where they have docks and don't have docks.
I don't, unfortunately, I don't know. Know a lot of that information, but I'm glad to find out for you.
Which counties are going to have people to go out and pay into that fee?
Yes, sir.
I think it's generally a $50 fee per structure.
It's going to start in January.
Okay.
I think this county, it lasts about $1,000 a year. It goes back to Greenwood County, from Lawrence County.
Okay.
You know, the fee post over here. I don't know about Newbury. That's what we call here.
I do know this fund is going directly into the lake management department for scoring the lake, all the maintenance and the management of the board office.
I think the budget for that department, lake management, was around $800,000 a year for Greenwood County, but they don't spend that much. But I saw one of the budgets in the past year, and it was $800,000. And that dock fee goes towards that lake management fee. I mean, goes towards everybody that $800,000. Pleasure, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Mr. Lunder for all his work. This is a very thorough report here. I believe we've got a lot to gain from this. So like Councilman Pitts had mentioned, I'm also interested on the initial financials, what we'd be looking at. So I thank you.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Paul?
Mr. Chairman, just one question, it might be directed at you, is our next action would be to adopt or not adopt the master plan at this point. And in those committees, the inner jurisdictional board, commissions or committees, I'll make the assumption that we would have a portion of that based on some financial lake funding or something, and Greenwood would have a portion, and Newbury would have a portion as well.
Well, I'm going to do tonight and accept it, this information, and I'm going to give it to Mr. Slager, and we're going to put it in a committee, let the committee run it back to council.
This is the full report of the plan. As I stated, I followed the program with his handout, but this is the full report.
Yes, sir.
Except the financial.
That's correct. There isn't a budget, there is no itemized cost estimates for any of the projects. It's just identifying things that they saw from the information that they provided from public here.
I guess that budget would be step by step if you moved into the progress. We accept the plan, we wanted to leave some, get the lower hand, as they say, and we move forward. That budget would be adjusted as time, for the initial time.
That's right. And there are a number of opportunities to look for funding sources outside of the general plan, so we want to do that together. Thank you. Appreciate it.
When we have that committee, we'll sign the committee, we can come up with several questions. Anybody's got any questions, we can send to Mr. Lunder and get him to get an answer for it before it comes to council. I thank you, Mr. Lunder.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
My next item is our Lawrence County Economic Development Corporation, Mr. Jonathan Cogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got primarily a pile of, that's filled just off.
Mr. Jonathan is the new economic development leader in Lawrence County. He got the monkey on his back, huh?
You got a copy of this? I'll look at this.
Yeah, I'll place a copy of this one to be a little easier to see. There's some of the charts and graphs on there that are a little small. I appreciate the time this evening, and as always, if you have a question, as we go through it, feel free to, I mean, I might be a little redundant, Councilman Jones and Councilman McDaniel, but if you have another question, feel free to ask. I'll kind of buzz through this because I know y'all got a pretty full agenda. The first thing, as you The first thing, as you go forward and you see Lawrence County Development Corporation advertise, we changed our logo. We hired a marketing firm to develop this new logo for us. The old one is the one in the top left corner. The primary focus of it is the LCDC. As we advertise across the country and throughout the world, really, LCDC doesn't mean a whole lot to a lot of people. Most people in Lawrence County don't know what LCDC stands for, much less in Dallas or Europe or somewhere. So we changed our logo to tweak it to where when you see our logo, you know the exact location that we're talking about, which is Lawrence County, South Carolina, USA. What is the LCDC? I think most of you know this, but we have four main functions. One is obviously business and industry recruitment, primarily manufacturing and distribution recruitment to the county. The second, and probably the one of the more important ones that kind of gets overlooked from time to time, is the business retention and expansion. And what that is, is working with our existing industries on expansion projects or any other needs that they might have that arise. Product development is working with our utility companies throughout the county and finding the next industrial site, whether if we work with a private developer to do that, or whether it's a kind of whatever it may be, to provide industrial product for prospective clients or prospects. And then lastly, is probably the one that you hear the most about nowadays, is workforce development. We've had some success in this county recruiting jobs, and part of that is we're running out of available workforce. So that continues to be a thing that we work heavily with Piedmont Tech and the school districts on trying to put together separate different avenues to try to help solve that problem. And on that note, Piedmont Technical College, most of you have been to the Center for Advanced Manufacturing out of eighty-nine. Over the next month or two, they're getting ready to start phase three of that building. They've had phase one and phase two. The state put in the state budget this year about a million dollars for them to do a phase three, so they'll be adding on to that facility. So it continues to be a huge asset. Our public-private partnership we have, obviously Lawrence County, the support that you guys give us is the majority of our budget. But we also have, our board consists of Lawrence County Water and Sewer Commission, Clinton Newbury Natural Gas, Lawrence Commission of Public Works, the City of Lawrence, the City of Cleveland, Town of Greycourt, Lawrence County Memorial Hospital, Lawrence Electric Co-op, Piedmont Technical College, City of Fountain Inn, Duke Energy, PRTC, and then we have forty-four investors, most of which are outside this county, that contribute to us, that go straight to our marketing budget, and we have three separate levels that they all give to. But we use that money that those investors give us strictly for marketing Lawrence County to the world. This is a list of the 2015 announcements that we had, and as you can see, there are a total of eight hundred ninety-two jobs created and announced in 2015, as well as just over a hundred and forty-seven million dollars of new capital investment announced. As I mentioned earlier, the importance of the existing industries, all but three of those are existing companies that are already here in the county that chose to grow their business here and expanded. So most years, with the exception of the year that ZF shows up for some large company, usually around eighty percent of our new job announcements and capital investment are resolved from the expansion of the existing industry. New jobs areas, you can kind of see how it stacks up in 2015 compared to the last twenty years. It was our fourth highest total going all the way back to nineteen ninety-four. Capital investment, it was the fifth highest total, a hundred and forty-seven million dollars. Obviously, that's very important, and that's what results in the tax revenue to the county. And then that's kind of the breakdown of the different amounts and different sections of the county. We kind of divided the county into three areas. It kind of crossways with just over sixty million dollars of being the Greycourt Fountain Inn area, almost thirty of it in the Lawrence area, and then just over fifty million dollars in the Cleveland area. This is an old slide. I just, I like to show it though. It was in GSA Business in 2014, but from 2008, 2013, Lawrence County was the fifth best county in the state as far as capital investments were concerned, and we keep some pretty heavy company on this there. So that's something for us all to be proud of. Wage growth, our wages have steadily climbed over the last fifteen years. We got the new numbers for 2016, and it dropped a substantial amount, which we can't really figure out why. We don't know if they miscalculated the last several years, or they miscalculated this year, but for some reason it shouldn't, I mean, you can see kind of how it gradually climbs and it gradually decreases. It shouldn't have gone down quite that much, but nevertheless, the number is what the number is, so that's what it is. It helped, it not, this sounds crazy, but the Department of Revenue divides the counties in the state into four separate tiers, and we were in tier two. Tier one is the most developed county, and I was down to tier three, which helps us that we get more money, more grant opportunities from the state, and helps companies with incentives from the state to help them qualify for more money. So unemployment rate, that's the unemployment rate over the last fifteen years. It's up just slightly to six point seven percent on average for 2015, that was all twelve months combined, but it was almost eight percent in January, and it's down to five point four in December. And it was in five point four in November and December, so it came down as the year went on. So, and unemployment, Mr. Slager asked a very good question. Unemployment is calculated on where you live, not necessarily where you work. So if you live in Lawrence County and you work in Greenwood and you lose your job, our unemployment rate goes up. So it's kind of, it's not really indicative of necessarily eating out of activity in this county per se, because we have, according to the 2010 census, we have over seventeen thousand people that leave this county and go to work in another county every day, and we have just over eight thousand that come into this county from another county. Once you start crossing county lines, unemployment rates. We track the new prospect activity based on the number of RFI's we get, which is for request for information. We had forty-eight in 2015, which is the lowest amount we've had in eight years. But we're seeing, probably the reason that number's lower, we're seeing the initial contact of us from projects that are more, a little more serious, I guess you could say. It's not accounting, just somebody calling, hey, you have a site. They're actually a little further along in the process. And we break, we break the RFI's out, just like we do the capital investment, with twenty properties submitted in the Cleveland area, nine in the Jones area, and twenty-three in the Greycourt Fountain Inn area. That's it for the slides. I put another sheet on the back of the presentation. I got this information from the audit office, and I wanted just to share with you, because I thought you might find it. Since that's the FLO revenue that the county has realized from 2013 to 2014 to 2015, that, the 2015 number is what was billed in October, so that hadn't been received yet. I think a couple of bills actually went out a little later than that, so that number might actually increase. But that is the number that comes into the county after all the credits and multi-county park divisions and allocations are done. That's the actual number that you guys see. I wanted to point out, too, it's kind of two years in the reaper, almost. The money that will be billed this year is actually, the money that will come in this year is actually the stuff that you voted on in 2014. So it's almost, it's almost two years before you actually realize they gained. But this is, don't hold me to the exact figure, but just so you know, I know you guys are getting ready for budget sessions, but 2016, an educated guess, I think you'll see an increase from 2015 to 2016 that'll be at least as much as an increase from fourteen to fifteen, if not more, just with some things that will be coming off and some things that will be coming on. So that's some good news there. That's really all I have. I mean, I answered any questions.
Anyone have any questions, Jonathan?
I got one. On page three of this, we have 2015 announcements. It's always a little confusing, I think, as to how they've calculated and when they come to issue. And that's included, I think, in the FLO documents, how they will agree to X investment and X number of jobs over, is it over a five-year period?
Yeah, usually, usually the FLO documents outline a five-year investment window, but most of the time, I'm not going to say all the time, but most of the time, especially with an existing industry expansion, when you see, let's say ZF at five hundred and forty-five, and those jobs are already there, they did them that year. Now, when a new company comes in, it takes five years to kind of ramp up to that total number, but most of the time with expansion, it doesn't take them long to get hit that job number.
And the company will submit documentation to a DOR or a partner counter or something to verify that before they do it.
Yeah, because their statements are based on job creation, and so they have to, they have to prove it's a statement.
So this number, they'll follow that, this number is announced jobs that may or may not be in place at the end of 2015.
Exactly. In my, in my opinion, but most of the, most of the, most of the expansions with existing industries, they probably, I'd say probably.
They typically come on board after the capital investment paid and the senior year or the tax.
And kind of back to the unemployment rate, we had just pure numbers to kind of show you how that unemployment percentage, we had almost twenty-three hundred unemployed people in Lawrence County in January, and we had just over sixteen hundred unemployed people in December. So you got about sixteen fifty people more people or less people unemployed than you have now, so that's kind of the way I look at it, too.
Anyone have a question?
Yes, sir. Just out of curiosity, if a company doesn't mean that five-year investment window and the job growth there, what's the, is there a process?
Yeah, in all of the agreements, there's callbacks built in. Now, whether it be if they don't hit their investment number, the county will do enact callbacks and recruit some of the credits that they in order to see. The state, most of the job incentives are performance-based. They're based on withholding taxes and stuff, so you actually have to create the job to get the withholding tax rebate. So if you don't create it, you're not getting the incentive, so it doesn't really, you know, it's kind of a, if you don't create it, you aren't getting incentive, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
I know everybody takes the FLO, but is five-year payment still in place?
It is, yeah.
It's not to do that.
And most, most of your companies that are under a two and a half million dollar investment.
And that's, that's, here's that school tax, isn't it? Is the FER.
Yeah, the county portion. For five.
Anyone have?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our next item tonight is Secretary of Reading Ordnance eight oh eight.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Apologize for my voice. Trying to lose it here. This is including some initial property for the indemnifying act that approved their B and B agreement after December. This is adding property into an existing multi-county park. It would be our recommendation, but further with approval by Councilman Secretary. This is going into the octagon of that.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Do we have a motion for Secretary of Reading Ordnance eight oh eight?
So do, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second. Motion and second. Do we have any other discussion? Tonight, we're called to the vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Our next item is Secretary of Reading Ordnance eight oh nine. Mr. Cooper.
Yes, I think Mr. Rush and Wes, meeting explained the transition or transfer of three parking areas down by the emergency center, which would be a parking lot across from the side entrance to the old library, and then the lots of lower end going back up toward town or the other tracks, where the county would acquire those from the city of Lawrence. The city of Lawrence would acquire parking lot on the corner, what street is it?
Caroline and Lawrence.
Lawrence, big parking lot on the corner, right over here. So accessible to happen, and the county would get back to the city, the city of Lawrence would give the county free lots that we're using down by our emergencies and fire services.
I think everyone's familiar with this. Do I have a motion for Secretary of Reading Ordnance eight oh nine?
Mr. Chairman, I move for Secretary of Reading Ordnance eight oh nine, property exchange.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Do we have any further discussion? This is basic trade and couple parking lots with the city of Lawrence. All in favor, raise your right hand. My next item is First Reading, and this is titled only Ordnance eight one zero. Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir.
This is what was added to any of the general.
I apologize for the last minute addition of this. We did not know until late Thursday, and Mr. Coleman and I had a conference call with the company's attorney. This project is kind of on fast track, and it's being identified as project dupe. This is an existing industry in Woodville Industrial Park. These are old leaseback agreements that this company has. These FLOs go back to nineteen ninety-three and nineteen ninety-seven, and I think it was recent addition in two thousand and four or five. The company that is acquiring the existing industry wants to use the simplified fee version, which is what you all are familiar with, the burden is found again, saying, we don't need to be, we don't need to be owning these buildings and land. We're transferring these over to the company's burden to the simplified fee. This is the first step in this process. We have no assurances at this point that the new company will invest any new money, but we do have an assurance that the existing industry will continue. And this is just a matter of converting this to a simplified fee so that they can, they can take over. Kind of, kind of a little bit along the lines of what you did earlier with the FLO. We would encourage first review approval. We apologize for the length of this. The attorney, we didn't know about it until late on Thursday afternoon, and I had already said, Ms. Walsh, I was not in. This transaction likely will be included probably by the first part of launch. That's how fast the track is. We would encourage first review approval. My title, please.
Do we have a motion for First Reading Ordnance eight one zero?
So do, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second. Second. Motion and second. Do we have any other questions? Tonight, we're voting for First Reading Ordnance eight one zero. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero.
Mr. Chairman.
Next thing, next item on our agenda is, at a prior meeting, we had a motion made about the council committee as a whole involving the emergency. About the council committee as a whole involving the emergency medical services. Mr. Jones made a motion, and Ms. Anderson asked for to address that motion with a request to change that motion. It was granted by Councilman Jones. I'm very confused about this motion. Uh, you shed a little light on it, Mr. Seger.
I'll try. Uh, at, I reread the minutes again after the last meeting, and uh, my interpretation of it is that the motion for committee for the whole was to look at various methods, procedures, things that might improve the EMS for the whole. And the reason that we added this to the agenda was first to establish a meeting date to get to those particular items we talked about in the past. And to determine whether or not, I think Mr. Burrell and Mr. Avery and Mr. Koochak were added as the first staff on that committee, I guess that's the right word. And to see if any more research is needed by, uh, by the council to determine what the components of that discussion would be. We talked about RFP, we talked about expanded curves, we talked about privatization, we talked about a lot of it. And I think what we're trying to get at is if, uh, and, and we've also had a lot of information presented uh by council members and by staff and by others on our EMS situation as it is now, and some suggestions as to what could be done or should be done to try to improve that process. And I think what we're looking for as a staff is a meeting date and also uh some suggestions as to what should be on that agenda, if that's the proper term. And if you need any additional information from our, from our staff or from others as to how, how to seek. So, we just uh, think the, as I, as I reread the minutes, it seemed, it seemed to be the thrust of what we're talking about. And uh, you know, we, we're personally willing to meet anytime, and the annual service chair of that committee, we're personally willing to meet anytime you all want to meet. We just need to establish that date and basically see what is needed to discuss, and if our, if nine-one-one or EMS or others need to, you know, need to provide a replacement, or that meeting, that's what we're kind of looking for. So, that, 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 that's the reason it's on here, to see what, you know, where we go from here, that's what we're talking about. So, that's, any question? That's the way I understand it.
That's correct, Mr. Segerz and Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, that motion was based on the Health Emergency Services Committee, you know, the recommendation of two of the three of the members that were assigned to that committee. So, um, yeah, setting, you know, my original motion was to call another Health Emergency Services Committee meeting, um, start the process for qualifications for ambulance providers to participate in Lawrence County EMS. Um, that, you know, so that, that's what we would be doing here. We just need to establish a meeting date, and I'm guessing that the way that, this committee as a whole, that we're, basically the Health Emergency Services Committee is
Be full council.
Be the full council.
Yes, and that's what, that's what, that's the core.
The reason I put this thing, EMS is a very big part of the, the government in Lawrence County. And when you have committee meetings and you have three people from council sitting on the committee, there's a lot of things, when that committee brings a proposal to council, there's a lot of things that council does not hear. And I felt like this situation needed to be addressed by the whole council. That's why I created a separate committee of the whole council, Mr. Burrell, and Mr. Avery, and Mr. Koochak. To, to be at that, that meeting, but once you made the motion, Diane asked you to amend your motion, and you'd set an amendment, and then everyone voted for it to move. So, uh, the way I see this is, uh, Mr. Segerz and Ms. Anderson will get together for this meeting, we'll call this meeting, and we'll sit down, and each councilman can address the chairperson about what they want to see changed in the EMS service. And if there's anything to be changed, it'll be decided by the whole council. Uh, that's the way everything else is done. You've got seven people up here voting, if you've got four votes to change something, you can change it. If you don't have those four votes, you cannot change it, and I've learned that from experience over the last twelve years. There's a lot of things I wanted to change that I wasn't able to change because I didn't have votes to change. But that's not to say that I felt like I was right all, all the time, but, but that's just the way it kind of goes in my work.
Mr. Chairman, the, the purpose, the committee is just make recommendations to the council as a whole and always require a vote, so I just wanted to make that clear that, you know.
Well, I agree with that. When you have a committee meeting, you have a recommendation to council, but a lot of the things that's said in those committee meetings don't come to the full council. A lot of things come as a, as a recommendation. That's why I encourage anytime we have a committee meeting, for anybody on council, if they, if they're willing to do it, to come participate in that meeting. If not, if not maybe as a voting participant, but to, to hear actually what is going on.
And that's really why the, this uh, motion was amended, in that we wanted to make sh- I wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to address their concerns. And that's what I would, so we can establish some goals and directions, because uh, we're just a committee. We've met several times with EMS, and what we need to be looking at is what long range plans that we want to do with EMS, and not to continue just meeting as a committee, bringing back the board. And I think it's time now for us to meet as a whole, as a half of members, to make sure we all go in the same direction.
That's what we're gonna do. Like I said, Mr. Segerz and Ms. Anderson will get together last night when we're gonna have a meeting.
Do you want to talk about the base tonight, or you want to come back with, with the base?
Oh, we can discuss that if y'all, y'all ready to do it.
Next, I just just talked about, we, you know, next, the next council meeting on the ninth February, we will, two weeks from the ninth. We are having an auditorium to go over the category of state of two thousand fifteen. Saying you don't have much on, that I don't have, and also, could we, would, would it be permissible to have a regular session at five thirty and get through the audit presentation? And then maybe adjourn that meeting, and then leave after that with, with this, this on topic to discuss with the whole, that's the question.
Everybody personally all right? I may, would be all right, but everyone at some count. What's the date you're talking about? My name, my county, the second key, in February.
And I'll get with that, so that we can develop a plan if there's anything, if anybody wants to, but only if, you will, you may, you may only call us, let me know, we'll be glad to. You know, I, I think it'd be better if we had this topic go through the rest of us. And if you think that Mr. Burrell and Mr. Avery here, think we need more, you know, we've had maps and graphs and all kinds of things that have been prevented, I think they've still got that, they've still got that information. If you all want to see that again, if you do that, if you feel like we proceeded it far enough along, you know, with what's been developed so far against the recommendation, we'll go there. But just let me know, and Anderson know, what you want to do, and we, we will prepare an agenda for that meeting and do everything else.
I, I would like to see as part of that, Mr. Burrell and Mr. Avery, their recommendations of their thoughts on where we stand and what needs to be improved are much more in depth than mine. I, I, I understand, I, I understand we start that meeting, if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I understand when we start that meeting with what needs improvement in our current system, if anything. And we obviously feel like there's always room for improvement, such as, for example, area coverage and response times, or service improvement, or long range plans, set goals. So, a lot of that is, is, is based on the data that these guys have, you know, the area coverage, response times, what's the standard versus where we are in certain areas. So, I, I, it's always up to, I'm not chairman in this case, but I certainly would like their, their response.
They'll be part of the meeting just like everyone on council.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on.
And we'll, we'll prepare documentation and get it out, rid of that, but, next, move next week.
The second key is in February. Next thing is a clarification of uh, what was written in the plumbing chronicle, it's probably way back. Our whole Tuesday meeting in the county council. I really don't know where that came from. Uh, I know we didn't have one meeting in November and one meeting in December. But that does not mean that we're not gonna have two meetings in January, February, March, and April. I know Mr. Thompson suggested if we didn't have a lot of stuff on our menu, for example, of what we just went through on council, we're gonna use our next meeting. We're gonna have a short meeting of council, and then we're gonna have this committee meeting for council. So, there's times that we will do that, but when you do not have a council meeting twice a month, if we all saw in November and December, there's a lot of things we've got behind now. So, uh, I just wanted to clarify that. Does anybody have any questions about that? Not, well, move on to the administrative report, Mr. Ernst Sager.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, uh, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Banquet, we come Thursday night, and maybe you're not saying that, and it's, if that's pretty in college, we have a table there with eight seats, I think, if you, uh, if you want to come. You'd love to know, there's no ticket required, it's just, you know, I think a dinner party, seven, there's a reception, six, I think, location across, across the way. Uh, I think, uh, the dean students, I believe, at, at, at close university, it's, it's Jack, I believe is his name, who, who's a large county native, will read this picture, so that's what. So, then, four, five hundred people come, and I think some, most of them are gonna pass, but it's gonna be this, this week, they have to borrow it at seven o'clock at noon.
Roger, she's not Jack.
Roger, she was a Jack, uh, Roger, Roger, and that's a Jack. And we, Jack.
All right, we've got comments from council members. Uh, our, of it, comment time is closed. I'll ask for comments from council members, I'll start with Mr. Pitt.
No comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McDaniel comments there. Ms. Anderson?
Uh, in the State of the Union speech, the governor, uh, had in her budget, full funding for local government. Now, this budget of hers go to the House and the Senate. And so I'm asking everybody to make sure that they talk to our representatives, to make sure we receive full funding of our local funds. In the past, she hasn't been one to agree on that, but there's a oversold funds there, and we need all of our funds to be returned back to us. So, I'm asking everybody to stand by, ask our representative to stand behind her, and make sure the money come back to the council, that helps with our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I've talked to different, to different House members, and it's been a paper pursuit, I'm sure, and thankful that, you know, we get a rebate to some divisions and cities and counties that we've been held back on for so long, we're gonna have a budget, and if I'm wrong, I'd like somebody to correct me.
They, they actually have to start a budget.
When they gonna do it? I don't know.
I think what the end is talking about, maybe, you know, the other, I think, for credit, that, that, for full funding of local government, for the first time in twenty-five years. But the House and the Senate, the House will start the budget process, probably in the next week or so, then he'll, he'll wind up to the House and the Senate, and finally come up with, you know, it's sort of legislative, it's like a, you know, you know, the sort of, you know, the key layer that basically, two, two hours of legislative, still at that point, but uh, that's what, that's what the authority lies on that.
They were, they were, an article in the end that the Colonel funded, in Ringwood County, was talking about the same thing, and Mike Pitts came back and told him that what the governor said was this proposal. It wasn't what was gonna actually happen, but he said that he hoped that he could get more money through the rest of the House down there, could get more money back to the county. He did say that, but I still don't believe we'll get full funding of that.
Well, we didn't get cut completely out anyhow, but uh, somebody said we did, we got some on it over here.
Yeah. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Um, in regards to, I want to echo what Councilman Anderson was saying there about the local government fund, and also in regards to the nine-one-one call on Friday. I've discussed it in detail with Mr. Avery, of course, and he's been there with plenty, and I, I completely understand why Newberry County was sent to that call. The part that I, I don't understand, and that I've got questions on, is the miscommunication between private providers on our network agreement and our county service. Um, at five P M. there was, uh, one of those private providers contacted, um, the county service and asked them, you know, would they need assistance on a night where you've got hazardous conditions, ice on roads? And um, they took, you know, there was a miscommunication, is what I'm gathering, from what they took from the, the response from our county EMS, so they sent their crew home. And then they were contacted around seven oh five, um, about, um, a call, um, out there. So, two hours and five minutes later, they were contacted after they were told they weren't, you know, what they took from what they were told is that they wouldn't be needed for the evening. So, I hope that moving forward with our next meeting and with, um, the EMS concerns we've got, you know, we're gonna be able to address things like that and work out better public private partnership between county EMS and our private services. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman, only one, one question, I think, for Ernie. When is the proposed model of, of these scheduled, uh, this, uh? Not quite, sir.
Not quite. Um, the, Mr. Rush and Eric can crack air for us. Of all, the, that product's been on the way for a year and a half, and this wood, we, we would slot the ice Thursday, Friday last week, but it was, it was great. The problem right now is the cabinet, uh, provided. Of all the subcontractors, and this is by practice, we had a project done, so. The person providing the cabinets for workspace and that kind of thing has financial difficulties. So, the contractor, general contractor was able to secure the cabinets from the, they haven't been, already made in shop, he was able to, they've secured the cabinets from the, uh, cabinet maker, and split it in the building. Issue now, get it put up, and summer up, summer not up, they've already done it, they've already done a bunch of this, and uh, basically you're just painting, putting railings on things, that's all the, uh, drop. I think, uh, first week of February, or second week of February, should be, that'd be closer.
We should, they should sign certification of occupancy first, second week of February, and then we'll start moving, moving furniture in, moving equipment in, and then, uh, people sometime after.
There are some, some persons, not hopes, some persons, the person, the president, it's already been processed, ready to go, and we can move, and once we get these minor objects completed, minor issues completed, they can move that furniture in. And uh, arrange the phone system, phone electronic system to be, be in place when that happens, so we're probably two, three weeks late.
I would like to, I would like to suggest, and I don't know what the protocol is with a project this size, you know, uh, ribbon cutting, so to speak, or possibility of the public to, to come into that building and do the building before we really start manufacturing it.
Okay.
Later, and, and I'm, I'm open to anything. I just think it's a, I just think it's a big plus for the county, I think it's a big plus for our, um, employees that'll be moving into that area and that building, and I, I would like to use the opportunity to show it off a little bit, but just, just for that to talk.
Sunday afternoon, I think, because we've got a call on Sunday, that, we need to call hours.
I get that as well, but I'm, I'm proud of it, and I think it's something our employees will be proud of.
I'd like to, I'd like to consider.
And we are planning on having it over the house.
We'll be glad, anybody who's, go ahead, we'll be glad to. The way that integrates into the whole building, it absolutely, it can, I mean, I, I mean, there are passive ways and, you know, there are ways to secure the building and all kind of things that we just have not had in the past. So I think it's, I think it was the Russian that already had received, I think, Mr. Chandler Wood asked if he coordinated possible use for church group. I think you already forgot some requests on that.
I have one request so far, I believe.
We'll monitor those, keep going, hopefully those things will be together.
Mr. Seger said, we did go through the building. I said from the very start, we started this building, it was at the back of the building, and we changed and moved to the front of the building, which I think was one of the best moves of the whole project. It was explained to me by Mr. Dennis, I asked him, when you got a tool, when that tool wore out, it's time to get you a new tool. We certainly got a real good tool over there now. And we got a usable building. Even a stairway, it's got storage area up under the stairway. Every part of this building, every corner of this building can be used. We haven't got any area that's closed off. Of course, you've got a little open area where you first come in the building, but it's, it's gonna be super nice. One more thing I'm, thing I'm gonna say is, any department we got in this county, fire service, EMS, 911 system, there's nobody perfect. But it just irritates me so much when, when someone finds out one little problem you had, and they want to make a, make a big, big deal out of it. Everybody makes mistakes. Just cause someone called EMS, don't mean that the EMS is gonna come out here and save everybody's lives, just like the fire department. You call the fire department, come out and put a fire out, that don't mean that that fire department's gonna, you're not guaranteed that fire department's gonna put that fire out. But that EMS service and that fire department or any other service is gonna do the best they can to help the people in Lawrence County. And it's not good for the morale of our services or, or someone to just, you never hear anything about the good things people do, you only hear the bad things people do. And regarding our EMS service, this past year, Lawrence County EMS service was awarded the best EMS service in the state for the service of its side. So I'm gonna leave it at that. We've got a executive session, one employment matter. I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session.
I made the motion to go into executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven zero. We'll take five minutes of time. Okay, we're back in open session. We had an employment matter, but there's no action taken. And I'd like to call attention of council to this memorandum that, I forgot what it was ever, but this memorandum about the vacates, is on the planning commission. I think we got three vacates right now, like whoever's, I think Ms. Anderson needs a point one and this is three, Mr. McDaniel needs point one.
I think it's one, no, it's two, I think, it's two now. One, one, first one attended, we got five.
Give that a little attention if you would. On anything else coming for council, it's not within the guarantee.